No, that's not right. I'm gonna... I guess we're ready.
We can start and we'll call to order the special meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a silent prayer. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alderman Brunelli. Alderman Cavalo.
Present.
Alderman Cato.
Present.
Alderman DiGio Van Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorsso.
Here.
Alderman Giacomi.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Napoli. Alderman Nujaim.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Weaver. Alderman Pernaruski.
Here.
Twelve present, three absent.
For the record, Alderman Napoli doesn't think he's going to be here tonight. He's in session.
Mike's not.
There we go. All right. Just for the record, Alderman Napoli had let me know that he would not be here this evening because he's in session up in Hartford. With that, we will go right into the agenda, which is the meeting with the department heads. The first item is basically just the budget overview and the process discussion, which will be led by Sarah Gary.
Thank you. Good evening, Sarah Gary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist. I'll just quickly go over what was presented to you back on April 1st when we submitted the mayor's proposed budget and then turn it over for questions to department heads. But just as a reminder, like I said, the budgets were presented, both the general fund and capital budgets were presented on April 1st. The FY '20 mayor's proposed budget is in the amount of $415.4 million. That's a $3.3 million increase compared to the current year FY '19. That's .79 percent. We have an average increase of about 1.15 percent per year over the past eight years. We originally had department expenditure requests in the amount of $423.9 million and the Budget Development Committee cut $8.4 million from those requests to reach a balanced budget. As was mentioned back in the presentation on April 1st, we did have net grand list growth in the amount of $57.2 million or 1.34 percent. And that allowed us to increase current tax collections by about $2.9 million. It also helped allow us to keep the mill rates the same. The personal property and real estate mill rate is 60.21 and the proposed budget for FY '20 and the motor vehicle mill rate remains at the state cap of 45 mills. State aid has remained relatively stable in FY '20 compared to FY '19. We are keeping the contribution to the Education Department at the same level as FY '19 as well. Tonight, just to point out, we have the Public Safety Departments here, both Police and Fire and the Public Works Department. You may remember from the presentation back on April 1st, we did see an increase in the public safety area of the budget between Police and Fire, an increase of about $2.6 million for both departments. Most of that is related to salaries. We were very appreciative of the, both unions, both the Police and Fire unions, for agreeing to a wage freeze in the first year of their contracts that were recently negotiated. The first year was actually FY '18 for both Police and Fire and those unions took a zero in that year. So now what we're seeing in the FY '20 budget is raises for two years because when we developed the FY '19 budget, we didn't know what the wages awarded to those unions were. So those wage increases were not included within the department's budget. So you're seeing two years' worth of raises now within the department budgets. But we do appreciate the zero that the unions agreed to in year one. You'll also see increases. We have Public Works here tonight, which has a significant number of blue collar employees. The blue collar employees also agreed to a zero in year one, which is actually the current year, the year we're in now, FY '19. But there is an increase in FY '20, so you'll see those increases built into the budget as well. The Nurse Supervisor Union also agreed to a zero in year one of their most recently negotiated contract. I'd also like to point out that the elected official raises are dictated by charter and the raises would be 5.1 percent based on Social Security COLAs over the last four years. For the mayor's salary, that would be an increase of $6,616. And you'll notice in the mayor's office budget on the positions page, the mayor has given back that salary increase. Next, that's all I have as far as the budget goes. Tonight, we have the Public Safety Departments and Public Works here, as well as we can talk about the operating charges section of the budget, which includes our contributions to the internal service funds, as well as our contingency account. We have another meeting scheduled for May 14th where you're scheduled to meet with the Water, Sewer, and Education Departments. You'll then need to hold the second public hearing on the budget, which needs to be held between three and seven days from the date of budget adoption. The budget must be adopted by Friday, June 7th. The state legislature ends their session on Wednesday, June 5th. We'll certainly keep you apprised of any major changes related to state aid that would affect the budget if it would require any changes in our budget. We'll definitely let you know about that. So with that, I'll turn it over to the Police Department. Chief Spagnolos is here to answer any questions you might have on the Police Department budget tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Thank you very much. I'd like to say thank you to the mayor's office and Sarah Gary for all their guidance through the budget process and, of course, my staff to the right of me here. We did pretty well. As you look through our line items, you'll see that the majority, almost all the line items, remained or decreased for this year's budget proposal. There were a few line items that saw somewhat significant increases. Salaries through contractual negotiations, through the collective bargaining agreement increased. There's a slight increase in the clothing line item. There's 31 new officers that have been added for this fiscal year, so the price of outfitting those officers has caused that line item to increase slightly. And our maintenance contracts, EF Johnson, which was a radio system that we crossed over to a few years back, we were able to successfully negotiate a number of years of maintenance within the first contract. Those years are now exceeded and we're currently paying for a maintenance contract for the radio system. Outside of that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions for the chief? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you and congratulations again, chief. And from everything that I see in the public, you're doing an outstanding job.
Thank you.
One question I had was a large increase in your operations, or the request, any from 170,000 to 230,000, an increase of about 60,000. What was that going towards?
So when we looked at the operations budget, I mean, that really provides funding for all the operations in the Police Department, everything that we do day in and day out as far as responding to calls, what officers need for equipment, community relations, Detective Division, forensics. And what we wanted to present was a realistic budget. We realized that our actuals ran around $230,000 over the course of the last few years, so that's the budget, the number that we decided to go with. Thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, welcome. This is your first time proposing a budget, so... In the last few years, one of the concerns from the Police Department was actually retaining the police officers. I see that one of your highlights, as written on the statement, is that you have attained full staffing levels. I also see that as of the budget development, you had 293 total police officers with the target of 300. Could you elaborate a bit on what the expectations are of the department as far as retaining, being able to retain the officers and also maintaining that 290 to 300 number?
Absolutely. I think that, you know, we're in a really good place right now. Morale in the department is very high. You know, through the mayor and the union representation, we were this year able to pull the contract out of arbitration and settle a five-year agreement that was very beneficial for both the city and the police officers. That in and of itself is going to retain officers here in the Waterbury Police Department. You know, there's been plenty of opportunities. We've been very progressive and created many different task force and opportunities for our officers to grow. That is quite an incentive in police work to retain personnel. Things are going very well. You know, day in and day out, we get calls at the office, frankly, from officers that left our Police Department, did not want to come back. We are utilizing the COPS grant that we were able to receive some years back. And that's paying for 10 of the police officers that are currently in this budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Airing none. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you very.
Are you ready? All right, I just, I don't want to catch you off guard.
Chief Martin and the Fire Department, next.
So as I always like to do, I give you a little handout with a history lesson that I'll go over with you very quickly and then take any questions that you might have. I'd like to echo Chief Spagnolos, thanks to Sarah and the mayor, and especially to Sarah, not just for the budget development, but all throughout the year. She's a great person to bounce things off of and has been a great help in terms of managing our numbers and our budget. So thanks, Sarah. The handout that you're getting is just a quick history, little snapshot. If you go back about 20 years, the Fire Department budget was $21,216,000 and change. If you fast forward or go back the eight years when this administration took over, Police and Fire, I'm sorry, Mayor and Fire, the budget was about $19 million. So you can see it was decreased over that period of time. If you were to take the raises over the last eight years and apply them to that 2012 budget, it today would be about $21,900,000. And as you could see, the budget submitted to you today is $20,600,000, about a million and a quarter, almost a million and a half less. Budget's 3 percent than it was 20 years ago. That's just a perspective for you. To maybe preemptively answer any questions, you'll notice in the service and maintenance contracts, there is an increase there. That is due to the Fire Department absorbing, now taking over the cost of the drug testing program that was previously held in human resources budget that's now in the Fire budget. Also, auto parts, you can see an increase. While it's not a lot, it's relative to cost of goods. Firefighting equipment is in anticipation of a number of retirements. We would anticipate some point in time during the fiscal year, possibly doing some type of hiring that would cover the gear for those members. And the only other increase, actually, I think that was it. Those were the two. Auto parts, service maintenance. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Anyone have any questions for the Fire Department? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, chief. Last night, we had on the agenda the new engine, or I forget what exactly, ladder?
Truck.
Oh, correct.
For the East End. We were asking about, or I asked, about what we do with those, the retired vehicles. Do we try and recoup funds by selling it to another municipality? I understand Mike mentioned that we would possibly hold on to it for parts for other vehicles. What do you typically try to do with?
So generally, what we do, when we auction anything, we get what I would refer to as less than pennies on the dollar.
Okay.
Part of the reason is because generally when we take a frontline piece off, it goes to the spare apparatus. So in this case, it would be a spare to be used when either the other ladder truck is in for service or in for repair. We generally, to my knowledge, in my 31 years, I don't think we've ever gotten rid of anything before the 20-plus year mark. So by that time, they're barely serviceable. We do try to buy certain apparatus in groups over a period of time. So for example, a number of years, we bought Seagrave. In that case, to your point, we could use parts from, you know, within a generation of that apparatus.
Sure.
We do do that sometimes. By the time we auction them, again, literally, you get $1,000 to $5,000. They buy it for the, you know, the rear end and the axles and the engine. It's not really too much that's left there. But this particular apparatus, one of the problems we're having is the manufacturer's no longer in business. So a lot of the parts that we get have to be actually manufactured or fabricated. They're one-offs. It's becoming extremely expensive to maintain it. So this is something we would look to maybe be able to sell on a secondary market, depending upon the, you know, we're a little bound with the purchasing ordinance and the way that we dispose of vehicles, but it does have value beyond what the normal auction would bring.
So it sounds like we're getting our absolute value out of the older vehicle.
Absolutely, absolutely. Generally, the rule of thumb is it goes to spare status and then gets used to the point where it's no longer DOT compliant.
The fire mechanics, are they all completely in the new facility?
Yes, we've actually been down, we just hired two new ones over the last three months. We were down to one plus the supervisor. So we're back up to a full complement of three mechanics and a supervisor. They're completely in the new facility. I'd welcome you to come down. You can give me a call. We'd love to give you a tour. I know you had seen the old facility, absolutely night and day. The new place is gorgeous. The city did a great job. WDC did a good job overseeing and we couldn't be any happier down there.
I'm happy to hear that. Thank you, chief.
Any other questions? Airing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public Works is next, but I don't see Dave Simpson yet, so if we could just wait a couple minutes. Dave Simpson's on his way from the Board of Public Works meeting, so just another minute.
All right, well, that's fine. We're way early, so...
Yeah, we're ahead of schedule.
While we're waiting, I'll just remind you, as Sarah mentioned, we have, the next meeting with department heads is on May 14th, so I think that's two weeks from tonight, three weeks from tonight. That night, we're scheduled to meet, starting at 6:30 with Water and then with Sewer and then with the Board of Education. So if you want to, does anybody want to add to that list? Is there anybody that we have not listed that you would like to see come in? Otherwise, Sarah's going to finalize the packages and get them out so we can start taking a look at them, so... Okay. It's not. So the smaller ones that we've never had real issues with, we didn't, rather than bringing them in for nothing, but like I said, there's no, anybody who wants to talk to somebody would be happy to do it. So if not, then I guess we're good. We can finalize those packages and get them out, so...
Okay. Thank you. We could go on to operating charges if there's any questions on that.
Want to do that while we're waiting? Sure. Okay.
I'll turn it over to Mike to give a quick overview on the operating charges.
Okay.
So deep in the packet, pages 178, 179, there's the overview of the general financial operating charges. This is the section within the budget that covers the expenses predominantly for employee benefits, for contributions to various municipal groups, and the contribution for debt service and also the budgeted contingency account. Overall, last year's adopted budget amount was $118.5 million. And through an evaluation of the obligations for next fiscal year and the status of the various funds, we ultimately arrived at a proposed budget for 2020 of $117.9 million, which is just under a $700,000 reduction year over year. I would highlight that included in the adjustments year over year is an additional $1 million contribution to the debt service fund. That would raise the annual contribution for debt service expenses to $22 million. We are still in the process of financing the city's comprehensive capital program. I'm anticipating that over the next couple of years, we will cap off at the annual contribution in the neighborhood of $23 or $24 million. That will keep us under 6 percent of budget and allow for the ability to continually re-appropriate funds for appropriate capital projects for investment in the city. And also, we have increased the contingent appropriation. Last year, or the current year we're in now was at $850,000 and that number will be, is proposed, at $1.3 million for next year. This will allow for a little bit additional money set aside for unanticipated expenses and to the extent necessary to address any general wage increases that are awarded for next year that can't be addressed within savings within the department budgets.
Does anyone have any questions for Mike on the operating costs? Operating charges? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think Dave may be out back if somebody just wants to grab those guys.
Okay, now we'll start with Public Works.
Thank you. I first would like to thank the board for allowing us the time to discuss the proposed FY '20 budget with you. I have with me two of the members of the DPW leadership team, Pat Mulvihill and Mark Lombardo. Pat Gooden is scheduled to be here. Unfortunately, she has not arrived as yet, but we're prepared to continue without her. These two gentlemen, along with the Bureau Chief, are the ones that work with me to develop the goals and objectives of the department and to implement the action. At this time, I'd like to highlight certain items in the budget and then we're prepared to respond to any questions that you may have. The mayor's proposed budget is for $19,654,520. The department had requested a budget of $21,275,313. And the FY '19 budget is $19,198,280. The major differences between the department request and the mayor's proposed budget is, I'm sorry, the difference between the mayor's proposed budget and the department's request is $1,320,693. The department had included $1,125,000 for sand and salt and snow removal operations, which have been transferred to Town Aid Road. Municipal solid waste and recycling costs attribute to $857,025. Anticipated electrical costs due to a rate increase would be an increase of $65,398 for a subtotal of $922,423. The street lighting account under the Bureau of Streets was reduced by $500,000 due to the anticipated savings with the acquisition of the streetlights. $200,000 was transferred from street lighting into repairs and maintenance in order to fund a service maintenance contract for the streetlight system as we move forward. The balance of this increase will cover service contracts to ensure the reliability of the equipment at the new Public Works facility, including but not limited to HVAC units, vehicle wash equipment, and the electronic fuel station. The communications line was requested to be increased to include additional GPS units that are currently being installed on city vehicles. At this time, approximately 60 vehicles have the GPS units installed and this will make us able to add another 20 units. Another increase is included in the operations account that include multiple work that we hope to accomplish, including but not limited to the continued maintenance of the city rampages. If there are any questions, Pat, myself, or Mark are available.
Any questions? Alderman DiGio Van Carlo?
Just have one for you. Thank you for coming down. The 196 for the service contracts, what would not be covered on this building the first year or from a new build like we did, is something falls out within the year? Is that what it is?
Most of them, most of the equipment that we bought has a one-year manufacturer's warranty. Some of the equipment requires periodic maintenance, including the HVAC units and the vehicle wash facility. So this will ensure that we are able to, if whatever we cannot do in-house with our staff, meets the operations and maintenance manuals and requirements for the equipment to keep them under warranty.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Nujaim?
Thank you, President. Not so much a question. I just want to commend you guys in your department for what you do. Every time, you know, constituents call or we call and we work together on several projects with different, you know, department heads and leaders of your Public Works and just want to give you guys kudos and congratulations on what you do and how speedy you are on getting things done. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you for that. The management team in Public Works sets high standards for everyone in Public Works and I can assure you that everybody in Public Works does their best to meet those standards.
Anything else? Then thank you very much.
If I can, to the board, we speak highly of this Public Works facility, which is just phenomenal. And so thank you, folks, mayor. Thank you and your team. We are having a ribbon cutting and an open house. You'll all be getting invitations on May 19th at 1:00 PM at the facility. And that is a Sunday, but it leads us into National Public Works Week and we intend to celebrate National Public Works Week with the ribbon cutting of this phenomenal facility. Thank you.
That's terrific. Alderman Sherman and I were just talking about trying to get in there to see the building, so that'll work out terrific. Thank you.
And at any time, you can call myself or either one of these gentlemen if you'd like to...